Quite a bunch today, wow.
Yeah.
Everyone ready?
Yeah.
I'm ready, I mean, speaking for myself.
Okay, welcome to the regular City of Berkeley Planning Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. McLean, would you please call the rolls?
Buckler.
Yes, here.
Kempner.
Here.
Muirad.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Chadle.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kaplansky.
Here.
Commissioner Trotto informed me he would be unable to attend as he is out of town on business.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda from anyone?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McLean?
Kempner.
Yes.
Muirad.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Chadle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes.
And Kaplansky.
Yes.
Alright, the next item is approval of the minutes from September 25th, 2018. Any changes or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Mr. McLean?
Muirad.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Chadle.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Buckler.
Yes.
Kempner.
Yes.
And Kaplansky.
Yes.
Okay, next up is communications. I didn't see anything provided for us this evening. Was there anything that came in late or anything we need to know about?
No communications at this time.
Okay. Next up, we have citizen comments. Any citizens that have comments that are not in the agenda, you can come forward at this time. We're going to ask that you keep your comments to four minutes or less if possible, and also that you please sign in on the signing sheet with your name and address to help us keep good records of the meeting. Lastly, the planning commission will not engage you in any discussion, so when you please come to the microphone, just state your name and address and begin your comments. Is there anyone that would like to comment on anything not on the agenda this evening? No? Okay, moving on to our first order of business, that's the public participation plan. This is the third draft that we've discussed this evening. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this point, Mr. McLean?
Currently, we have a short survey online available for residents to offer comments, suggestions on the proposed plan. For the folks that couldn't be here, we put the survey live Friday, and it's going to run through Friday, November 9th at 5:00 PM. So if anybody is interested in leaving comments, do that survey. If they're able to do so, there are links on the city website and on Facebook.
Okay, and that would serve as our extended portion of the public comment for the survey that's available beyond what we would normally do at a meeting, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So who would like to start discussion on the public participation plan? Mr. Richardson?
I'd like to say that I believe that Draft 3 is an improvement over Draft 2. At the last meeting, I had some comments regarding clarifying the responsibility for employing the basic and advanced methods of communication. I think there's a lot of new material in this draft that does do that, and I was kind of playing around this afternoon thinking about ways to make this even more precise. And I finally decided that was probably a bad idea. I think we have the, we have struck the right balance. I think you have with your draft language here. There's no one-size-fits-all approach that we can reduce to this plan. It'd be contrary to the purpose of the plan. So I like Draft 3. I think, I think we're very close to being able to promulgate this plan.
Anyone else?
Yes.
I would agree with Mr. Richardson. I think this hits closer to the mark of our comments from last month. I think it has enough specificity and enough flexibility, which is a delicate balance to reach, that provides a framework for engagement for future projects. So I don't have any substantive comments on language in here, so.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Muirad?
You know, I know we took, when we hit our session with the public a while back, there's the photos in here. They're kind of hard to read. I'm wondering if they need to be just, all the comments just typed out as bullet points and that's it, as like a table or something like that. That's my only concern. I thought everything else looked great.
And I can see if there are different technologies at our disposal to make those a little bit easier.
Yeah, or maybe you can click on a link and, you know, if it's electronic, then you click on the link and you get the full picture, but it is hard to read.
Stan may have something to make that more readable.
Yeah, okay. But I thought just to make it even simpler is just, you know, like the third one. How do we define success and then just have a list of the items that were mentioned? That's.
Okay.
But actually, they're there, so.
Anyone else? No? Okay, I emailed you a few typos, Tim, to take care of. One being that the PUD for the Advanced Communication Method should list the "sometimes" instead of the "not applicable." Other than that, I thought the draft was good. I didn't think there was anything else additional to add. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item?
Kurt Height, resident Berkeley. I just had a question about the planned development of process flowchart. I noticed when I got to the part after the public hearing plan review action, it had an option to postpone, and I wasn't sure, are you guys going to stipulate like how many times that can happen or how long a postponement can happen for? You know, so that we don't get into a perpetual postpone, come back, postpone, come back, or delay for two months, three months, four months, five months. I just don't think that that's fair for all parties involved, really, and I would like to see some clarity on that.
Anyone else?
Hello, Susan Traro, Berkeley. My question is about the survey, specifically where is it located? I can't find it on my cell phone, so I don't know if it's a mobile issue. I can't find it on the main page of the city or in the planning commission's submenu.
See me after the meeting and I can, I can direct you. And I believe.
I looked on Facebook, too.
Yeah, the communications director, he put a new post up today with the link to the survey. Why don't you see me after the meeting and we can.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Dean Smith, Larkmore Boulevard. Just a question. I read through the plan there, and it's pretty comprehensive, and I'm glad I'm not sitting up there. You've got multiple channels for citizen input, but there's nothing that I read that describes how that input gets to the commissioners. Is it collated, is it analyzed, summarized? You know, people are going to be posting comments on Facebook, whatever other social media type things there are. And it wasn't clear if the planning commissioners are going to be expected to log onto Facebook and monitor those, or if there's a mechanism to get the material to the planning commissioners and allow them to see things. One, that's the flow of information. Two, you might want to make it known that the communications that the city puts on the website would be one-way communications. If you have, you know, ebb and flow, I think you're going to have trouble with the Open Meetings Act. And one of my pet peeves, quite often, things will come up and a comment, you know, resident making comments is either misinformed or, you know, maybe not quite accurate in what they're saying. There needs to be a mechanism in place to address and correct any misinformation that's floating out there, because things, they kind of take a life of their own sometimes, and you want to be able to control that and, you know, keep things under control so you have a productive and positive discussion. That's it.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Yeah, Vivian Kermedi with the DDA. I do think that should the design review board move through, it probably needs to be in those flowcharts. So that's my only comment.
Anyone else? Okay, to follow up on a couple of those then. Tim, could you send out, have them resend out the survey on Facebook a couple times before the 9th, so it's at the top of the city's Facebook page?
Yes, and I believe it's set up on there as an effect.
I just went to the city's, I sent to the city's webpage.
Which Tim are we talking to?
Tim McLean, but.
I just went to the city's webpage.
Okay.
And right on the very front of the city's webpage is the public participation plan. You click on that, it takes you to the page for it, and there's the survey right there.
Okay, good to know.
A link to it, so. I don't know about Facebook.
With regard to the question about postponing a PUD pre-op or any project really in general, it's my understanding that if a developer comes back with something slightly different, that we do have to allow them the pre-application hearing each and every time. That would be correct?
Yes, and right now, the PUD ordinance does not make reference to the number of times an item may be postponed. You know, we don't attach a time limit.
That's what my understanding was, too. So we really can't attach any time limit to the postponements?
Short of amending the ordinance, no.
It's even my understanding that with site plans or other things, if they are trying or attempting to address whatever we postponed the matter for, they then deserve another chance to be heard on those items before the planning commission. Correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I thought that was interesting about the Facebook comments. If people want their comments included in the public record, it would be via here in this audience, or it would be via email or written letter. It's my understanding that's how your comments are included in the public record? And those are the comments that would appear to us here as communications, correct?
Yes.
So it may be worthwhile to put something in the public participation plan that if people want their comments as part of the record, that that would be the way to do that. Does anyone have any additional comments or questions on the plan?
Well, mine's kind of a question-comment thing. I understand, correct me if I'm wrong about this, that before we make a decision on, in any of these matters, we have to consider public comment. So the record comments that you're referring to have to be in front of us in some way before we act. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I think that kind of partially gets to what Mr. Smith was commenting on, maybe not fully, but in one sense or another, staff has to present those public comments to us.
Right, so it may be helpful to include something in the plan. If you would like to comment on an item, here are the ways to do that, and indicate that, you know, commenting on a Facebook thread or item or whatever you want to call it, that that's not going to be a way to get your comments into the public record. Is that what you're trying to get at?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so what would be the next steps with this? The survey will close in early November, November 9th, I think you said?
November 9th, and then I'll take a summary of all the feedback that's left if any major revisions, you know, if we're seeing a theme that something is missing or you just need a general revision can be made. I'd like to bring this back for the November meeting, possibly for approval by the planning commission. The next step would then be to ask city council to approve the public participation plan by resolution.
Is there a public hearing required with this at all?
There is not.
Okay, so there would be another opportunity for public comment at that November meeting, and hopefully we can send it on to city council at that point?
Yes.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, moving on then to accessory buildings and structures. Our next item, the exterior appliances, ordinances, ordinance. Mr. McLean, do you want to give us a brief overview?
Yes, some revisions were made based on feedback from the last meeting. There seemed to be a general consensus from the planning commission on not permitting exterior appliances in a side yard. One item that causes me some concern is specifically related to air conditioning units. It's been a longstanding policy of the city, you know, dating back 20-plus years to permit air conditioning units in side yards. There'd been a mechanism in place, if your next-door neighbor, you know, has no objections, you know, they would sign off. Not a great policy, but that's, that's what's been in place for 20-plus years. So, you know, we get, when we get requests for AC units, it's fairly common for them to want to place them in a side yard. So to change that at this point would be a major reversal in, you know, 20-plus years of policy. And I think you're going to see the docket for the zoning board of appeals very long if this were to change. Generators, I can, I can understand the apprehension. They're louder units. There's a precedent of if you want to put a generator in a side yard, you have to go to the zoning board of appeals and prove you have a practical difficulty. So I think we need to have a discussion on placement of exterior appliances in side yards and whether or not we want to prohibit AC units, you know, from side yard placement.
Have you gotten any complaints about units in the side yard since the?
We have not. In speaking with staff today, there's, you know, in several years, there's not been complaints about placement in side yards.
Any idea of how many units are placed in the side yard on a regular basis, let's say, for new builds in a year or new units installed?
I tried to find a way to track that, unfortunately, it's very difficult to track, but I know we get several this year. I know we, I believe we had at least, at least five this year.
Okay. All right, who wants to start the discussion on this then?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
To piggyback on that, I think that was part of my concern at the last meeting, and creating a burden on those who currently have a unit in the side yard specifically. So I think the question of grandfathering again and how can we at least, at least do that to grandfather those who currently have a side yard unit and may be prohibited for new builds or new units that aren't currently located in the side yard going forward. I don't necessarily have an issue with that. But my concern is the undue burden on the resident who's getting a new unit, and now all of a sudden, it's a, you know, much longer process because they have to reroute the things that we were talking about last month.
Okay. Yes.
I can echo that. So I had my air conditioner replaced two months ago, a replacement unit, because my other one wasn't working, but. So I called the air conditioner company and asked them how much it would have been to move it to the back of my yard, and they gave me a quote of around $1,800 just to move the unit with the wiring and the line set. And that wouldn't include also having to remove a section of my deck. So I agree that side yard is okay, or would be okay if they're there, but then if it's a new build or an additional, not a replacement, then require.
If someone wanted to move their unit from the backyard to the side yard in an existing home, that would be a variance?
My thought would be that would be moving it, so, yeah, it's the opposite direction, but if, the goal is to get them in the backyard or people don't want them in the side yard, but, I mean, it would have cost me $2,000 to have it moved 15 feet around the corner. And my new air conditioner, I can't even hear it running. It's directly below my bedroom window on that side of the house, so I think the new ones are a little quieter if you're upgrading, but that's just my thought, so.
Yeah, I would agree. I think the new ones are quieter. My air conditioning unit is also outside my bedroom window in the side yard, and I don't hear it running either. And with the lot sizes here, I think it's a challenge to get it in the backyard personally.
I think it's more of a challenge to get it in the side yard.
Yeah.
Me, too.
I don't have a side yard.
When you, when you have.
Because when you have a 40, when you have a 40-foot lot, okay, so 10, you're going to have a 10-foot setback on one side, and that's where your driveway is, so it's going to have to go on the other side. And we're saying in this that it has to be five feet from the property line.
And if you have, 40 feet's going to be tight, but if you had a 50-foot lot, you can maybe meet that. You know, we have small backyards as it is on a lot of houses, and those air conditioning units in the rear yard really infringe on your backyard space if it's in the rear yard.
And part of why people don't hear their air conditioning units when they're below their windows is your window is closed.
Right, but my neighbor has it out on the side yard, too, and I don't hear those either. Personally, I don't have a problem with air conditioning units in the side yard. The generators, I can understand would be more of an infringement, and I am concerned that if we change city policy now, we're going to end up with a lot of ZBA cases and a lot of angry residents. But, you know, we'll, we'll see, I guess, what the whole planning commission has to say. Anyone else?
I have a 39 and 1/2-foot lot, and mine is in the backyard, and it is, you know, it's nestled up as close to the house as ordinance or code allows, and it does not infringe. It's not in the way of anything. It is just fine where it is. It sits back there. Our patio's built around it. Our deck was built around it before, and it's fine. But it's tucked away behind a fence, and I don't think it makes a lot of noise because it's where it is, but I can hear my neighbors who is in the side yard, because it is in the side yard. I can hear that one.
Fair enough. Anyone else?
I don't think the intent here is to, if someone has to replace a unit, force them to put it in the backyard. I don't think the intent at all. It's just for new builds, and if we have five a year.
But new builds and people who might want to relocate their unit, right? So anyone who's putting in a new.
Absolutely, and that's what I meant, a new build, a new air conditioner, you know, a new appliance build is what I meant. So if someone has it in their backyard, they want to move it to their side yard to do whatever they want in their back, well, yeah, that's an issue, that could be an issue. So, but I don't think, you know, if someone who maybe changes their so-called grandfathered in, so I don't think that's the intent of this at all, just for new, new applications.
Yep. That's not included in this, we're going to have to add that as a comment.
Now, that.
Or it's discussed, because it was all from the generators, and the air conditioners were also included. So if we're grandfathering or allowing that sometimes, if it's a replacement, then that needs to be included.
Well, that's where I'm going with it. I think that's our intent, but it doesn't say that here, so that has to be indicated, if that's the direction the planning commission wants to go in.
Does every generator that's in the side yard right now has received a variance?
Yes, there's been four cases in the last two years, and they were all granted.
Okay, so it could be something like a change to the ordinance that even says any exterior appliances currently located in the side yard may continue to be so. It wouldn't necessarily have to say air conditioners, just leave it at exterior appliances?
I think that's fair.
Anyone else that wants to comment? No?
All I can say is that I just had a whole house generator installed, and there's no way I would ever put that in my side yard. No way. As far as air conditioners go, I'm not as familiar with a whole, you know, like HVAC systems, because I just have a couple of room air conditioners. But those are noisy enough, and, you know, they'd be right, the unit, I have a driveway on one side, I couldn't do anything on one side. The other side, it'd be right by my neighbor's driveway, five feet away from my house, and under his bedroom window. So I really envision this as a common scenario all around Berkeley, and for new builds, I think it's reasonable to expect rear yard placement.
Anyone else?
Ms. Chairman. You asked me a question, you didn't say, what about window, what we call window shakers, window air conditioners? You know, they're not on the grade.
But it's not an exterior appliance, it's actually in the house.
It would have to be attached to the window with the room you want to.
Okay, I'm just bringing that up, because those tend to be louder than the ground units. And they are, they're horrible. But, but those, over time, are going away.
Yeah.
Those are.
Yeah, I don't think we can do.
They sound like my generator, so.
Your portable generator.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public that wants to comment on this item?
Hi, Patty Curtis, Berkeley resident. I have a question about the yard location in that section. Is there a definition in our ordinance code about what defines the front or side yard? Is it defined?
Yes.
I believe it is.
I mean, with that, okay. What about corner lots? Is that also defined, and how would that be addressed? Okay, so on a corner lot, the side yard is treated the same way as on a side-by-side, okay. Just for the record, air conditioning, generators stay pretty much the same level of noise throughout their usable life until the very end. Air conditioners tend to get noisier as time goes on, so where you put it in the beginning, if it doesn't bother you, is one thing. Where it is 10 years later is a whole nother issue. And the section on restrictions, it says from the nearest side property line. Does that mean side yard property line, or does it mean any side? Should it be side and rear, or should you just eliminate the word "side" in there? That's just, I'm looking at the language, saying that would be open to confusion there. And. Okay, I think that's it, thanks.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just a point of clarification to answer Ms. Curtis's question. When the language was written, the portion from the nearest side property line was intended as side lot line. Like side yard, not necessarily, you know, rear. Like side, side yard, not, not necessarily, you know, rear.
So, so you wouldn't be measuring the decimal level from the rear lot line? I mean, it is conceivable you could have a house that's set farther back, put it in the backyard, and it'd be quite noticeable.
I think it may make sense just to put from the nearest property line to avoid any confusion. And one other typo that's kind of in that realm, I noticed too, in the setback section, it talks about exterior appliances must be placed a minimum of five feet from any rear or side property line. I would think we would eliminate side then, if you're only talking about the rear yard placement?
Well, but you still, even in your rear yard, you have a side yard.
Right. That's the intent.
Yep, so yeah, if you're in a rear yard, you still want it a certain distance away from the side lot line.
So it could be closer to, it could be in the rear yard, but closer to the house on the side?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, Kurt Height, resident. Now, you might have just answered the question as far as rear yard, but kind of on the side. Because when they replaced my AC unit within the last month and a half, I think it was a month ago, they were not able to put it where it originally was, which I had no problem with it being at the back of the house. But they told me that it was no longer allowed to be blocking access to my, you know, the, the power, the meter and everything like that. So they had to move it, shift it to the side a little bit. Well, I don't have any neighbor on the side, I have a wall. So it really wasn't, that wasn't an issue as far as getting a sign off. But they had to shift it. And I, I really, I, I hope that you guys keep that mechanism in place, where if somebody needs to shift it to the side, that they can get a sign off from their neighbor. I really don't think that it, people don't need an extra burden where they, you know, now they have to go to a board to get it approved, to get it approved. I mean, you know, I, my wife at home, you know, she has, you know, heart issues where the heat was really affecting her, and the matter of getting, getting a furnace and an AC, you know, find somebody to install, and then get it installed as soon as possible, that really was, was an effect. You know, it's something that had to be done. And, and to, to add that extra layer on there, I just don't think it's fair, because that thing has existed forever. And, and I, I think for the most part, you generally don't have a problem. You don't have people calling up all the time with issues with that. It's kind of a known thing. I mean, it's AC, when it gets hot, I mean, you kind of get used to the noise, if, if you're willing to kind of give a little, I mean, even when you got the louder ones. I myself, I don't hear it. I don't hear the AC units. I don't, I don't try to, you know, you know, poke at neighbors. But I will say, as far as generators, you know, I lived next to the shopping center. For years, they, if their power, if our power was out, and we had a problem in that grid where it was out consistently, they would pull up a big truck that ran for twenty-four seven, and it would rattle the house. And yet, they were allowed to do it. And I'm, I'm sure they heard it halfway down the block, and there was nothing really controlling that. I mean, if, if we're really concerned about the noise that much, there should have been something dictating, you know, their use of that. And, and maybe they should have been able to put it on the street, or do something, because it really wasn't fair that, you know, that I had to put up with it. And I was a good neighbor. I didn't call and complain. I just dealt with it. I, I realized that it was an emergency type situation, or something that had to be done, and I lived with it. And I just think that we, we should kind of expect that, you know, when power is out, that it's something that, okay, well, people are gonna have generators. People are gonna have things going on. We don't have to always call and complain. We can kind of make do until, till the, the power's restored and everything goes back to normal.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dean Smith, Larkmore Boulevard. Section 138 restrictions. When I read this, all kinds of alarms went off in my, my little brain there. Specifically, general decimal level of any exterior appliance shall register not more than seventy decibels from the nearest side property line. Do you guys realize what you wrote? This would be absolutely impossible to administer. Your manufacturer is rating an appliance, and they'll give you, you know, X number of feet away at certain height, and that's all done in a lab. If you're gonna move, say, potentially five feet from an appliance, your noise level's gonna be pretty high. And somebody from the city of Berkeley is gonna be out there with a sound meter, trying to measure the noise level of this appliance. You're gonna be dealing with ambient noise, echoes off of building walls. This would be a horrible, horrible thing to put into a, a city ordinance. What I'm suggesting, what I'd like to suggest, is that you stick with the manufacturer's noise ratings, and, and say it's, you know, sixty-five at twenty feet, or whatever the manufacturer specifies as an acceptable noise level. Know that if an appliance has excessive noise, that's gonna be due to some mechanical distress on the appliance. Not because it was installed improperly, not because it was placed wrong. But when you have something here that puts a city on the hook for measuring noise, and doesn't take into account wind, rain, humidity, whether the ground is frozen, when the grass was last cut, you're creating a burden that you, you will not be able to manage. And I, I just, when I saw this, I mean, this is the real reason I came tonight. I, I thought, oh, my God. You, you put the building department in a world of hurt if you adopt restrictions as written. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. McLean, I, I think it may make sense to include something about the manufacturer's standards. But my other concern with that, then, would be if a unit does need to, is loud, and therefore does need to be serviced or maintained in some way, that we would still want to be able to, to have a property owner do that, to make sure they're not exceeding the levels that the city feels are appropriate. Does anyone else have any thoughts on, on how to deal with that?
I struggle with, like, our current noise ordinance, because it just has prohibited activities between certain hours. And a lot of noise ordinances are written that way. I, I think it's okay to have a standard, a reasonable standard, because these are not items that are going to be used between certain hours of the day. It's the whole idea of having an emergency generator. I mean, I think we're really talking about emergency generators more so than air conditioners. But I, I mean, noise, noises are, yes, there's some variability on it that can occur because of other conditions, but by and large, you know, you can pretty good, pretty good reading at a distance with a, is it a noise emitter? Is that what they're called, noise emitter? And I, I, I think it's okay to keep a standard in there. It just, I mean, you can't put an ordinance out there that says, it can't be noisy, because that's our other alternative if we don't have a number. And the manufacturers, you could go buy an inexpensive one that has a very loud manufacturer rating. So, I mean, we're kind of hoping for a higher quality, lower noise unit. And we've gone back and forth on this several times. This is like the fourth, fifth, sixth time I think we've had this in front of us.
Anyone else?
You know, we've talked, Ms. Buckler's right, we've talked about this a lot. And I see a lot of numbers here written in and crossed out, and things crossed out. The industry standard, I believe, and I could be wrong, but it's still here, sixty-five decibels at twenty-three feet. That's an industry standard. You know, the one thing that Mr. Smith didn't say is, if someone got out there with a noise meter, the stupid thing's already installed. And we're gonna say, oh, you're over the decibels, you have to remove it. So I think it's, I think it's important to have an industry standard of some sort. You know, we change the numbers. We pick something. We're already saying elsewhere in the ordinance is not allowed in the side yard, unless there's a, you know, unless it goes through ZBA. I agree, we can't just say it must not be noisy. That doesn't accomplish much. If the industry standard, and I think it was more than one, if I remember, we had a couple of samples, it's sixty-five at twenty-three feet, at five feet up in there, or whatever the number was. Well, it does say five to seven, that's crossed off. Stick with that. That's, you know, we don't want something noisy in there. That's the industry standard. They all seem to say the same thing. I don't want to put it on the city to buy a sound meter unless they have one already. Twenty years ago, we were looking for a light meter, remember?
They were looking for that like five years ago.
Yeah. So, maybe we do go back to the industry standard. And it's just my, this is just my suggestion.
Because there's also potential industry standards could improve.
Right, they're probably not gonna be worse.
Well, yeah, and, you know, it doesn't take into account all the things he mentioned, but bouncing off of buildings, we talked about that. There's so many things that it doesn't take into account. And that can actually amplify it, if it's the right materials. So, you know, the, the noise, the, the, the noise emitting from the unit can be measured when it's installed. So, you know, I don't know how to word all that. Maybe we have it in here. But I think it's important to have something that's a minimum industry standard. So, you know, Bob's generator and bait shop can't come in and put in a, some obsolete unit that's exceedingly noisy. So it has to meet, the unit has to meet a certain standard. But we were already saying in our earlier discussion, not allowed in the side yard. Now, you can put it in your backyard, and it's still five feet from the property line. So what we really, what it really gained, all we're saying by not in the five yard is it's more than two feet from the property line. It's not bouncing off your wall into your neighbor's bedroom window. So I think it's important to have a minimum standard. The unit must meet these standards, decimal standards. But, I don't know, you know, I don't think we want to start changing numbers, who's gonna measure it.
My other question is, I guess there's no guarantee that they're putting this right in the very middle of their backyard. So if it's on one side or another, we couldn't find a standard, if I recall at the last meeting, for ten feet away. So if you're doing it at the property line, chances are it's too close to, to meet what the industry standards are anyways.
Anyone else? Additional public comment?
I just want to add something to the discussion. I actually have enforced, or been asked to enforce these ordinances in the city where I work. It's very different, seventy seems totally reasonable to me. I've been by the noisiest condenser unit you could imagine, and people complaining about it, and I never got it above sixty-five, walking ten, fifteen. I was within five feet, it got to, it got to sixty-five. I think our standard was seventy-five at the time. It's very difficult to say to a homeowner, your air conditioner is putting it over the top, when it could be the neighbor's lawnmower, or whatever. I would be very comfortable with seventy. It makes it easier for the enforcement to tell the person. All I've ever done was gone to them and asked them, have you had it serviced lately? I'm gonna recommend that you do. And most of the time, they come back and say, yeah, we did look into it, and it's just a noisy unit. But seventy is totally reasonable, in my experience. Thanks.
Any additional public comment? No? Do you have enough direction, Mr. McLean? That was a little bit muddy.
No, I, I do. I think, well, I think all this is a little bit more clear now with, with what we want.
So something about the, the grandfathered units that are already there?
Yep, I can, I can work some language with the units that would, you know, for existing units, which in the future would be, you know, non-conforming. I can, I can create language that addresses those.
Great.
I, I take it we're, there's no consensus to change the number.
What number are you referring to?
Seventy.
Well, I would suggest we do, because I don't, I didn't bring, I don't, maybe I did bring them with me. Hang on. I think both of these units said sixty-five, sixty-six exercise. Seventy-two during peak diagnostics. So I, you know, the numbers are all over the place. I don't know if there is a, a industry standard. I was, you know, when we were talking last month, it seemed to me that sixty-five at twenty-three feet, for whatever reason, was the industry standard. But of course, I circled sixty-nine on this one. But, so maybe seventy's the number. I don't know if there is an industry standard now. We don't want a piece of junk being installed that's very loud. We want to say it must meet this level, industry standard, and then all the other things that go along with it. And I think that's as far as we really need to go with it.
Well, it's just that, leaving aside what is the industry standard, how do you, leaving aside what that number might be, how do you determine, for the sake of our ordinance, what the industry standard is? And, and what happens when the industry standard changes? I, I think the focus of this effort is to, you know, to avoid creating nuisance level noise conditions in a neighborhood. So we should be, we should be, we should have a number, and that number should have some relationship to the, the kind of noise levels that are tolerable in a power outage.
So why don't we take the approach that, is that a number, seventy, seventy-five, that the unit has to be rated below that?
That's, that's what I'm implying. Thank you for clarifying.
I think that would, that would make sense.
That's exactly what I'm trying to say without saying...
Ms. Chair? I, manager, I, we could also just require they put a noise dampening enclosure around it too, if they have a noisy unit, if they want a bigger unit or something. I mean, those are allowed by code...
Are you just referring to the generators, or just to air, or air conditioners as well?
This 138 refers to generators.
Yeah, I think this is the generator discussion. I mean, I think most air conditioners don't really rise to maybe that, that level, but, and those would be maybe harder to enclose. But you can enclose a generator.
So what, if we were to just put the seventy, or seventy out there, let's say, then somebody could purchase a louder unit and include a noise enclosure if they want to bring it down to the, to the standards that we have?
Sure they could.
That isn't...
Have a bigger box in their backyard.
That's the last section or sentence of there, so it's included.
So that does lead me to a question. Is this just for, is that part under restrictions just for generators? Because it does say any exterior appliance. It doesn't just say, I mean, it talks about generators above that, but...
I think that's a good point.
And the generators tend to be louder. I've spent a lot of time reviewing, you know, the, the noise from AC units and, and the generators.
Well...
But, you know, it, it could be in there, then, if the generators are louder, then the air conditioning units will be fine, and we can just leave the sound portion in there for both, then, and both should be fine.
Yeah, how likely is it that the air conditioner's gonna be louder?
Right. So maybe under restrictions, that becomes a section A for the two items talking about emergency power generator testing and emergency power generators, and then the general decibel level becomes the letter B, and then everything's covered. All set? Okay, then, moving on to the last item of the evening, the design review board. I think this is the second time the planning commission is discussing this. Mr. McLean, do you want to introduce this at all?
Yes. At our last meeting, there were a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, a lot of confusion with the language that was proposed. One of the items the DDA director did was, kind of went back to the drawing board to, to see, you know, what can we do to eliminate the, the confusion, the questions, you know, et cetera. One of the things that's, that's being proposed, that you see in the language, would be the creation of a downtown design overlay district, which would apply to all the properties within the, the downtown development authority. You would still have your, your regular zoning in those districts, but you would also have the, the overlay which, which has the design guideline standards included in that as well.
So that would be an amendment to the zoning map as well, then?
Correct, yes. And it would, it would be in ordinance versus just guidelines.
Okay. I see we have the DDA director here. Do you want to add anything, Vivian?
No, you know, we actually, because it is a confusing thing, we actually reached out to Lakota, who's our planner for the downtown plan. They do a lot of design guideline overlay district things. And, you know, these were recommendations that they made to us as to how this would best fit. So what this does is simplify the process, whereas before, we had two separate ordinances. This design overlay district ordinance ties everything into one. So we have the overlay district, we talk about the design review board, and the review process, all within one ordinance. So it simplifies it. I will say that, you know, we, we were going back and forth, and I think you guys, I think Tim emailed you an updated version today versus what was in the packet, that John Sterren had taken a look at. And John actually, later on this afternoon, sent an additional line that he's recommending, because we had talked about just making sure that the design guidelines were talked about under intent and purpose. So he added in there a final line under intent and purpose that says, and to provide for design review to be conducted in accordance with adopted design guidelines. So I think that covers everything we were trying to achieve, and it gives those design guidelines. It, it addresses the issues where, you know, how, what happens when there's conflict between the design guidelines and... between the design guidelines and the current, you know, zoning. So, that is actually all addressed in, in this, this ordinance proposed.
Okay. And to just clarify the, the version that we're looking at, there, there were some changes sent over by the city attorney, specifically addressing the wording of things. To make sure that that's all up there and transparent for the public, can you make sure that that gets onto the city's website by tomorrow, the most recent version?
Yes. I had revisions placed on the website earlier today.
Okay.
I've not seen, I guess, Mr. Sterren sent over something.
I think it had one additional sentence added.
I've not seen that, but I can make sure it's placed on the--
Yes, please make sure it's placed on there. And this would be a continued item of discussion as we move forward. So, this is definitely not a final version. So, does anyone want to start the discussion on this? Yes?
Ms. Chairman, um, one thing I saw in this version we received, was it yesterday, or, no, this morning?
It was this morning.
Uh, it's now called the Design Review Advisory Board. That wasn't there before, the word advisory. That cleared up about ten questions I had.
There were, yeah, some language tweaks, I think, that the city attorney--
Yes, but, but referring it to an advisory board, it's like the, you know, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. It, that, that changes a lot of things. So, a lot of my questions, it went away. And I know there's other language in here that applied to this, but, um, I have-- Will these be public hearings?
The design review board?
Yeah.
So, it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that they will be public meetings. They will not be public hearings in the sense that they're advertised.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Meet monthly? So, when it says in here, "Powers and duties, B, six B, to provide comment guidance to property owners, developers, and architects of the proposed project as specified in the downtown design guidelines." In what manner? That will be a report to us, much like we get from the DPW or Public Safety? Is that, that's my impression. Okay.
Under E, make a recommendation.
Yeah, E.
No recommendation, but the, the, the form will be a memo to us.
A written memo listing the recommendation and the reasons for it.
Yep. Item C, and this may just be on page, whatever. Says, "All new construction will be reviewed by the design review board." Probably should say, "In downtown overlay district." I could see somebody saying something that isn't. I think that's implied, it's a downtown review, or downtown overlay district, but probably should say that.
Don't want to add the word advisory in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm leaving out words, but, yeah, that's-- On the very last page, number two, "Existing Building Design Review, Application Reviewed Within Ten Days." This is under existing buildings, refers to city and DDA staff. Who's the DDA staff?
That would be me. With the current executive director.
Okay, well, it's not consistent with what it says other places, so--
The language, you mean?
The language is not consistent. So, it says DDA, it maybe just says DDA Director, or Community Development Director, whoever that is. It's just a staff, and that could be anybody, or nobody. My only concern with this, as someone who works for developers, that doesn't mean they're good guys. Mine are, of course, the ones I work, my clients.
Nice catch.
This is an extra step, which means an extra month or two. Are we going to run into a situation in our town where the developers are going to say, "Berkeley's piling on. We have another step in the process." It's another month or two, you know, seeing what happened with the Los Let, which wasn't twenty-four months, by the way, it was about fourteen. I don't know where that twenty-four came from. But, um, I could just see, from their point of view, that we're piling on. And I don't know if that means, that, I'm not saying get rid of this, but I see that as a real issue here for people who want to come to our town and do things. We're adding extra la, another layer. And, that could take a couple of months. So, just making that comment.
I think that's a fair point. On the flip side, they could come here, and we would look at the design guidelines as the planning commission, and say, "You don't meet them, you need to do X, Y, and Z." And they would be coming to two planning commission meetings, or maybe three planning commission meetings. So, hopefully, this removes some of that.
But developers don't see it that way.
Well, that's not an option. It's, you absolutely have to. They could come in here with something that we loved.
They could.
Right.
Um, and it would be one meeting, and they're done.
Right.
So, they don't have the option to choose whether to go and meet and, and refine or not.
I'm just saying, from their point of view, because they definitely have a point of view. And they're the ones that are laying the money. It may save them time, ultimately, because we have a group of people, this is their job, before it gets to us, and it goes back and forth, and back and forth, and back and forth.
Right, and it helps us to have that.
I understand that. But I'm just saying, and I, you know, I like it, I'm not saying anything is, but I think it just adds a possibility that some people may say, "We're piling on." So, someone gets to explain it to them, then.
Yes, that's a fair point, and it has to be presented in a way that, that it's not taken as adding an extra burden to development.
Manager, maybe one way to address that is to fix some of the timing in here. There's a timing on the existing buildings, but maybe this isn't a monthly meeting. Maybe this is an on-demand meeting that helps scurry this along, because it's on demand. I mean, our meetings are set, and they're set by ordinance. And then, there is city staff time that needs to be done, but this could be running concurrently with the technical aspects that city staff should be doing, which includes the civil engineering design review, and the safety review, and all of those things. This is much more of an aesthetic, so, there should be less issues related to fire protection and things like that on the design review. Because you're not, I don't know if you're, how far you're getting into the interior of the building on any of this, or--
Not at all.
I mean, if this is just all facade stuff, then, I think this could be an on-demand, just like site plan review is on-demand, until it comes to us. So, maybe that gets fixed, and I, I, I don't want to--
It does say, "Existing Building Design Review Will Be Reviewed Within Ten Business Days."
Right, but now we're talking new, new building design review. I mean, could this be something that's on-demand? Because I, I don't know how many of these you're going to get a year.
So, if I can just speak to that, we did talk about this. And, the, the issue is, because you have an advisory board of specialized professionals, that it's, it's going to be just as hard to pull them together on-demand as it would be to pull you together on-demand.
Agreed.
So, the idea was that you could do a lot at, you know, with staff review for new or existing, you know, renovations and things like that. That would be more nimble and quick. But, for these new builds and for new development, it, two things I want to say there is, is, one is, before a developer even comes in, they get a copy of those design guidelines. They know what we're looking for.
Sure.
So, when they come to that design review board, they should come prepared. And they should be able to come, you know, meet one time, have a recommendation made to planning. Planning now has had this whole process facilitated. It should actually make that process move more smoothly. If, you know, they're looking at those design guidelines and paying attention to what we really are trying to achieve. But, I think when you're talking new development and new construction, trying to pull a board together in a few days, when they're, you know, the level of professionals that each of you are is just probably asking above and beyond what we should ask of a, even if it's an advisory board.
And, I don't know, because if this, I don't know if this has to fall under the Open Meetings Act or not, this board. I don't, I don't know, because it's part of the, you know, kind of the DDA process and a preliminary process. So, I, I mean, I can't speak to that, would be, that would be the, the city attorney. But, I mean, I, I don't see why this can't be done in an electronic format, when the board convenes, they have their plans, and they get on a conference call and talk about some of these things. I, I mean, it could be, you know, minutes be taken, but it--
My understanding is--
It isn't a forum, it isn't a forum for, like, official public comment on it, which happens during this process, where they get into the record. So, I mean, I, I think that it can be more nimble and quick than ours meetings, because we are bound by the Open Meetings Act, and there has to be a process by which we're convened, and--
Well, my understanding that, that this board, because it's appointed by the city, is also bound by an Open Meetings Act.
Okay.
But this board is going to be, too? Because it says the mayor and city council.
That's the board she's discussing.
That's what I said. That this one is, yes. This design review board would be, it, it has to go along with the Open Meetings Act.
I, I get it, and I, I kind of, a little bit agree with Marty, that I think it's a little bit of piling on, and it's a, it's--
The illusion of piling on. I mean, it may really not. It may be faster, but they don't know that.
What do you do with all the comments during that process? I mean, like, what happens? How do those get incorporated? What are those, what about, like, public comments during that process? How do they get incorporated? How do they get dealt with?
It's all in the bylaws, I think, of the--
Have we seen those?
No, they haven't gotten that for yet.
Okay. Well, the bylaws are written, I don't, they haven't gone to you guys, because, I mean, we, we've got to get through them.
So, the new, the existing buildings would be an administrative design review process. So, that would be nimble for people that want to update their existing buildings.
Can the builders opt out and not go through this board, and just come straight to us? Or they would be required to go, so--
In the, in the DDA district, they would be required.
Right, so that's adding, I agree, it's adding an extra step that could take potentially two, three months, because you get two meetings.
Well, but it depends, it depends on the quality of design we want in the DDA district.
Could they do the design review process and the other review processes, the site plan review process concurrently?
Yeah, that's what we've talked about, that, that site plan review and the, the design review could move along concurrently.
Yes, Mr.--
I think his answer was--
Mr. Mayor.
So, I'm kind of wondering, I'm, for, some of my comments in regards to reviewing this was, I know it's going to be a five-person board, and I'm wondering is, if it doesn't make sense to have somebody from the planning commission on that board? So, kind of like, we can have a liaison, or a member of the planning commission that's here, and the ZBA to kind of do that communication, you know? Because some, you know, people on the, the planning commission, you know, could have architect, or, you know, we do have an architect. We could have a developer, we could have a, you know, contractor.
Does that fall under a subservient board, though? I think that that's a problem.
That was, it was recommended that, that not, um, and this was from talking to, you know, other professionals, is that they recommend not having a planning commission member on the design review board. I mean, that's not to say that you couldn't, but it was not, it was recommended against.
You know, and then, the other thing I think about is, okay, you know, these guidelines are being adopted, you know, and, and then, my thought is, well, us as planning commission can, you know, in, in a DDA district, site plan review, or facade change, or whatever, we could be doing that, too, as part of our approval process.
Right.
Making sure it meets all those guidelines.
We could, but I, I, I think as a planning commissioner, it would be helpful to have the expertise of, of knowing that someone already went through all of this.
And the other thing is, that a, a lot of design review boards only allow for one review. So, we put that there could be up to two reviews, but that doesn't have to stay. There's a lot of design review boards. And when you look at a lot of the communities around us, there are design review boards in place that are requiring high-quality design. Birmingham, you know, Ann Arbor, I mean, there's, there's multiple communities. I mean, Bloomfield, you know? I mean, there's a lot of design review boards. This isn't, you know, an odd thing, but it's something that then helps the city to make sure that we have that high-quality design, and it actually does facilitate the process. So, maybe what you say is, there's only one review, and they don't get to come back for a second review, you know? And it goes, so that's a one-month process for you. So, it's, you know, it moves along, it comes to you guys, there's a recommendation. You don't have to sit there and then review the entire design guidelines, which are a hundred and fourteen pages long, to determine, you know, whether or not everything fits. That's up to the design review board.
And the design review board recommendation, could that include things like, it meets, it mostly meets the standards they need to add, or alter X, Y, and Z?
Yep.
Would one way of, of streamlining the process would be to make, make review by the board optional at the, at the sole discretion of the board? Not the, not the builder, but the board?
Of the design review board?
For new construction. But, and the scenario I'm envisioning is, somebody comes in, they're familiar with your guidelines, they put a plan on, on the table that conforms. It's, it's ready to go, and you, so you say, "Well, we're not going to exercise our option to hold a, a meeting on this. You're good to go. We're, we're going to, you conform to our guidelines. We're going to send it on to the planning commission." And, but--
So, that would be more of an administrative review, is what you're saying, even for new construction?
At the, yeah, at the, not, at the option of the, of the, of, of the board, not at the option of the--
But the board would still have to review it, then, right?
Not, not, not if the, not if the administrator decided there's no need for it, is what I'm, I'm floating that idea.
I'd rather have the board do it.
Yeah.
That makes me nervous.
What I'm thinking is, what, Mark, I think you're trying to get to, this is, in my head, I'm thinking is that a developer submits something for, for anything, whether it be new construction, a facade change, and it goes to your design review board, and everybody reviews it, and you all kind of say, "Jeez, we don't even need to meet, because it meets every standard that we have."
Then they make the recommendation to you.
That's the recommendation.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, they'd still have to meet because it's a public meeting.
So, then, that developer then doesn't have to sit and attend a meeting, they could just--
No, I'd think they still have to meet, because it's a public, it's a public meeting.
I think so, too. They couldn't review it just over email or anything?
I, I will say that, I mean, we've had a fair amount of developer interest. And everybody I've talked to, I've sent them a copy of the design guidelines, and I've said, "You guys, this is what's coming." And it hasn't prevented anybody from saying, "Hey," you know? In fact, for them, it's, it's the fact that there's guidelines in place that helps them decide, you know, what kind of development they need to do. So, I think we're actually, in many ways, helping developers. We're giving them the tools to show them what kind of design we want. And the same thing for facade improvements, you know? I mean, we're going through multiple, you know, design phases with facades right now. And, I've sent everybody, before we've even met with them, you know, the section of the design guidelines that's applicable to them, and I say, "Pay attention here, because this is the kind of stuff that we're going to be looking for, and this is what we'll help fund you with, with that facade grant." And everybody's been very open. I mean, they've appreciated the fact that there are guidelines out there to guide them, so.
Yes, Ms. Kempner.
Okay, so, I, first off, anything that's an addition, no matter how big, you, the idea is that that's all done administratively?
I think that was one thing that we were going to try to, Tim and, actually, Kristen, and John and I talked a little bit about that, is defining what's, what's considered just an addition versus like, you know, is it fifty percent of the building? Or is it eighty percent of the building, or something? So, that does need to be defined.
Okay, because that part makes me uncomfortable. I mean, I think we're here for a reason.
Yeah.
And, and that's to review, things like that. I'm also really uncomfortable with the whole area in red. The modifications, basically, I, the idea that we can overrule a code because the building looks better.
Well, but you have a new code in place. You have a new zoning district in place.
Yes, but, but this, I mean, it pretty much, it's height, it's parking, it's setback. I mean, really, any, any zoning code, we don't have a list of what your ideas are, right? Like, this is what we want the max height. That I would love to see, then we could discuss.
That's in the, it's in the design guidelines.
It's all in the guidelines.
It's all in the guidelines.
Then, wouldn't it just make sense for that to be the new definition of the, I mean--
So, the overlay district would, would be the new definition. It would supersede--
Because it is one and the same, right? I mean, the downtown is only where the overlay is. So, wouldn't it make sense to just redefine what the height is and all of that in our actual code?
Well, we've done that as part of the design guidelines. In a perfect world, yes, that would be the way to do it, I think. But we have the design guidelines, and it's something we want to get in place. So, by adopting the design guidelines and creating this overlay district, it's a way for us to do that now before we have the opportunity to rewrite the whole ordinance.
Yes, my problem is, is modifying your code, I mean, we have options for that. They can, there's a PUD. You can go for a variance. Both of those require a very heavy amount of proving that it's really worth it, right? This leaves no, you know, what falls under a demonstration of finding that the modifications will result in high-quality development. We have no standards for that. Whereas with our PUD, there's very clear standards. With a variance, there's very clear standards. If you're going to override a code, this is why.
There are very clear standards in the guidelines. If you go in, they are very specific about what constitutes a high-quality development. They're very detailed.
Then I guess, then I come back to, why aren't we just changing the actual code so we can discuss all of that in a very clear and concise sort of way?
Because that would take two years.
At least.
Yeah.
And we don't have that kind of time. And this happens everywhere. This isn't like we're creating this. These design overlay districts exist everywhere, and everywhere they talk about conflict with current code. And they talk and they address conflict the same way we're addressing it. It's because you've put a zoning overlay district and you've created a new level, usually a more stringent level of zoning. So you're not like relaxing codes. You're actually, you know, making them more stringent.
I'll have to look through. So your, your design guidelines mention parking?
Yes.
And the parking is different than what our current standards are.
Well, they don't talk about parking standards. That's not part of design. That's, but they talk about parking, how you address parking, surface parking and parking lots, and how those should be landscaped, what kinds of materials should be used and all of that.
Right. When I read this, what it tells me is that I can modify code to parking. So if we look at that and say, "Hey, I want, this, this can't have that much parking, so now we want that code to be less for parking." Unlike with a variance or a PUD, you don't have that, those same...
So you just say parking lots.
So the modifications would only apply to those items addressed in the design guidelines?
Exactly.
And we could, maybe, maybe you add something in there, modifications to items addressed in the design guidelines or something to make it clear that, that the number of parking spaces required could not be modified as part of this.
Yeah, and it does say to provide for design review to be conducted in accordance with those design guidelines. So everything that you're looking at has to be addressed in the design guidelines. And nothing that's outside of those design guidelines falls within this purview. So you're not talking about interior stuff. You're not talking about the number of parking spaces. You're talking about surface lots, site plan, building quality and scale and height and types of windows and materials used and, you know, design, you know, the level of design. I mean, I mean, we even talk about, you know, things like low-impact design, you know, things like that.
And I think maybe if that was tightened up, because upon reading it, it seems like it's free game to, you know, overlook code here and there if it meets a guideline. And I guess maybe then, these are feeling less like guidelines and more like, and a rule, an ordinance, a code. So, maybe if that language is tightened up, I would be better. My next questions then are, so if they need modifications from what our current code is, does that, then, and it has to go to city council, does it require a public hearing then?
If they're asking for a modification?
Mm-hmm, of our code.
So it would go through the usual process that it would go through as a site plan? A public hearing for the modification would not be required if, if they needed a site plan approval and that site plan approval did not require a public hearing? Just because they're asking for a modification, that doesn't trigger the need for a public hearing.
So for me, that's problematic because every other application of that we do. When it's a PUD and we are going against our current code, we have to have a public hearing.
But that's in the PUD ordinance that it has to have a...
So it's, it's fairly typical to allow modifications to landscaping, in some cases even to the number of parking spaces that are required and allow city councils and planning commissions to modify those standards without requiring a public hearing. That's pretty common practice across communities in the area. So this would not be out of line with those typical modification requests.
I just have something kind of...
Will you done, Lisa?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, yeah, I think so.
This is just a volunteer board, right? All these professionals are just volunteer. And then the fee that was in section F4, I think it was, that says pay fee, that's the normal design fee, or is there a fee to...
There's a fee then to the city.
For this, to come, before the board, they have to pay the fee plus all their other fees they have to pay?
I, I mean, that's for the city to determine. It's not my job.
Well, I don't know who wrote this. That's why I'm asking for clarification, the city then?
Yeah, I mean, I assume that there's a fee because...
So there's an additional fee to come before the board to have the design board look at their...
Yes. I, I mean, I would guess that would make sense.
And it's a city fee or is it a DDA fee?
No, this is a city thing. This is, the DDA...
Well, only because it's going before the DDA board, you know, the board...
It's not going through the DDA board. The DDA board has nothing to do with this. This is a city-appointed advisory board. This is, the city adopts the design guidelines. They're, they're appropriate to the DDA district. The DDA has nothing to do, once, once this gets adopted, if it gets adopted. This is a city, city ordinance, it's a city board. It's not, there's no DDA members that sit on it. Yes, for, you know, administrative approval, you know, the DDA director and the community development director review the plans, but that's, that's as far as, I mean, the DDA involvement is. This has got, this is not a DDA committee. It's the DDA who's bringing the initiative because we want to heighten the level and quality of design and development in our DDA district.
Uh, no, I think that answered.
Anyone else? Yes, Michelle?
Just a couple of things. I think, just overall, this, this approach, I think, clarifies what the intent here is and I think it does simplify things and I very much appreciate this, this approach here. Back to something that was mentioned earlier, maybe it's not appropriate for a member of the planning commission to sit on the board, but I think it might make sense for us to talk about a liaison, a non-voting set of ears in the room. I think that would, would help us.
And, and one of the thoughts that I had is, I mean, why not take a planning commission member, a previous planning commission member and put them on to the design review board? I mean, you have some pretty, pretty good ex-members who would be appropriate on that board. And then you would have, you know, kind of that link, not a direct link, but you would have somebody who really understands kind of who the planning commission is, you know, and understands, you know, the history and all that intellectual, you know, like, information that, and the history of, you know, the planning commission. So my thought would be that maybe you find somebody who was previously on the planning commission.
That makes sense. I also appreciate the perceived negative impact of the, the timing, certainly, but I think that providing the guidelines earlier in the process will ultimately actually speed up, speed up the process.
Oh, it may. I, I just think it's a perception. It may ultimately be faster, right?
Absolutely, understood. And then just in reference to the fee, we just, clearly it just doesn't need to be prohibitive. I mean, that, that certainly doesn't scare somebody up. I'm sure that it's going to be very reasonable and not the reason that somebody...
Well, and, I mean, I don't even know if, I mean, I'm just, you know, a fee's in there because most cities charge fees, but ultimately it's up to the city to decide, so. Tim's on hot spot there.
And actually, fees are usually there to cover the time that it takes staffs to prepare the packet and...
I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, so.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
So ultimately, the planning commission makes a decision.
Yeah.
Say the five on the board hate the building, for whatever reason.
Still up to you.
Five of us say, "We like it. Too bad," and vice versa, is the other way. You, you folks, you know, it complies. We, we recommend approval, just like any other, and we could still deny it. Just so it's clear with everybody, we still have that.
Yeah, it's just, they just make recommendations to you and then you have that final decision.
You're not going to come after us or anything.
No. Well, maybe.
You might, off the record.
So, I have a question for you, Vivian. We just approved a couple of different, a building and a facade change. I didn't even think about the design guidelines. Do they pretty much, and?
And I keep saying, you know, did these guys get the design guidelines? That's why I'm trying to, you know, as soon as we know something's coming, I'm, we're trying to start to be very proactive to get those. I, I'd already talked to Folio, who, by the way, even though, when they went out and they priced the facade, they realized they weren't going to be able to do that. It's kind of like a singed cedar, which is outrageously expensive. So, that singed cedar isn't going on there. But I'd already seen some of the stuff that they were doing because we've, you know, we, we try to reach out and work with these people with our facade grant. So they have to kind of give us an idea of what they're doing well in advance to even, you know, apply for that facade grant, so. So, yeah, we're just trying to be as proactive as possible. And I know Tim is, you know, Tim's office is trying to make sure that they get that information too, so. But once we can get this actually in place, then it'll just become automatic. And, you know, it goes into the public participation process and it just becomes one more, a step, but, yeah.
Mr. Richardson?
Let him, let her...
Okay, three of us are...
Anyone on that side?
We all had the same comment.
We all have the same comment. It's like, how, how far of a change can be made post our approval on a facade design? Well, because this was more than a facade design. This was also a special use approval.
We're talking about a specific project.
Yeah, we're talking about Folio. It's like, how far, how far of a design change is that? What else is coming because of budget? And does that necessitate a trip back before us? Because we approved a very specific look.
I think...
And a special use permit, if I recall, or, or special, well, we had to do, yeah, we had to do an approval for it within that...
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's office and...
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just wondering, like, at what point does that trigger it, its need to either, you know, buck up and do it, what they said they were going to do, or they have to come back before us? Like, there's got to be some point in the process that that happens.
I think the only thing they left off was the, the cedar because, I mean, nothing was...
That's a fairly large part of the facade.
It was. It was a cool look to it and I remember there was like some metal and stuff too and we didn't let some, so it was go to the ground or whatever it was, but that's what we know now. I mean, like, I don't know. I don't know what's not going to get done. And that's been a complaint from our residents in that, how are we making sure the developers live up to what they've committed to do?
Well, they have...
And when they get their use permit, it's like, did they meet the design sta, did they meet the design standard? Did they meet the design requirements? Did they put their dumpster location? Did they enclose it? So it's not just this, and I'm not, I don't mean to be picking on Folio because I think it's a great project, but this is, you know, like, the first little pebble goes down. It gathers some, you know, we get to a point where, okay, when should we have stopped this?
Well, and I think, to be honest with you, you know, when we, when we can start to better coordinate what, what is happening between, you know, city processes and the DDA with the facade grant and things like that, because, you know, once we initiate a facade grant process, then they have to give us, you know, it ideally would happen at the same time. A facade grant would be, application would be made with all the same materials that would be coming to the city for, you know, that design review process. And then, along with that, they have to submit what the whole thing is going to cost. So they know in advance what the costs are going to be before they even submit that facade grant. Because for the facade grant, you have to do what you say you're doing initially and the drawings that are submitted. If you do something that's different, then you don't get those, that grant, those grant dollars. So I, I really do think that, that this is going to facilitate, you know, communications for those business owners as they come to the city, where right now, you know, they might come into the building department and they aren't necessarily told, "Hey, you should talk to the DDA because there's a facade grant program" and they can help you through this design, you know, portion of it. So when you get to planning commission, you know, everything is in line with what, you know, we know expectations are and da-da-da-da-da-da. I mean, right now, that hasn't been happening real smoothly, but I think this will help facilitate that. So the more we can do that, the more, I mean, the less you're going to see of something like Folio because they would have had to price the whole thing out initially.
Okay, so that, that's fine for those projects, but there's more than just the DDA development that goes on in this community. So, actually, my question was a little bit more for Tim than for you because you're not the final authority on that review design. So, Tim, I guess, you know, when these things happen, what is the city's position? Like, at what point do you either make them come back or, because I, I think we're all surprised too when we see that, "Oh, that wasn't the material they were going to use," or, "Oh, they didn't finish. They didn't put their lighting up," or they didn't put their, whatever. At what point do you deny them their occupancy permit because they didn't do what they said they were going to do in their site plan? That was approved by us.
And I'd have to go back to the ordinance to give you the specific figure. There is one in there. Could it be, could the language be improved? Absolutely, to, to strengthen. So that way we ensure what was approved is what gets built.
Well, my, my comment on that is if they don't do what we approved...
Why come to us?
It's illegal what they did. And they actually should not be, there should be no discretion then to give them an occupancy permit. Obviously, the way it's handled in the real world doesn't have to involve, you know, a lot of proceedings. You can just tell them to change it. And if, if they don't, then encourage them to come back for another permit. But I, I don't think it should be a situation where impermissible improvements are allowed to just happen without consequences. So, I'm encouraging the city to always inspect what was approved and, and to note in some fashion or another when there's a non, a non-compliance. Not saying every non-compliance has to come back to us, but it has to be noted and corrected to the plan that we approved, or they have to come back to us, I think. Wouldn't you, wouldn't you agree with that, Mr. McLean?
I think that we should, we can have a, a threshold where minor changes can be approved administratively, but, you know, you need to have a firm threshold as to, if you're going to change beyond this point, you're going back to planning.
Well, that's the, that's the nebulous language that we all are uncomfortable with, this nebulous language. But, you know, I think a substitution of material because of some material unavailability or, you know, some ship sank that had the last load of, you know...
That happens.
Singed cedar or something and it's now sitting at the bottom of the Atlantic. That does happen. I get it. So, that, I think it's fine to say like, well, we're going to use another high-quality similar material, but to make, to make a wholesale change because of budget constraints. I'm a little, I'm a little uneasy. I think it has to come back to us, but there, I, I'm, I'm always uneasy with language that is nebulous.
So I think these are all really good points. We're getting a little bit off track from the...
We are, but a specific item came up that I think needs to be addressed.
So, maybe as, as part of a future discussion item, we could open this up and, and look at this and determine what that standard should be.
So, and I have some comments on the natural overlay district, getting back to...
So maybe in the November or December meeting, depending on how the agendas are looking, we can add this as a, a point.
Ms. Chairman, I would like to, I think the three of us were talking. I think if it is a significant change, and I'm sorry to be off track here...
That's okay.
But here's a situation where maybe, apparently, there has been a significant change. I think we need to have them come back unless it's, a different material looks the same. But this, to me, was a significant, if I recall, a very large portion of their facade. And, and it, you know, sorry, but, you know, money comes into play all the time and that's, that's not, that's not really our concern. If they're making a significant change, that has to come before us. And that may need, that particular project may need to come, come back before us.
So maybe you can look at whatever their new materials are and just... So, maybe you can look at whatever their new materials are and just see if it looks the same, then, then maybe it's something we are not particularly worried about on this one.
Whatever looks the same is, yeah.
I think there are accepted criterion for substituting materials. I, I think it's, there's some understandings of what constitutes equivalent materials. When we're looking at, like, new colors or new dimensions.
Textures, good colors, whatever.
I mean, that's a horse of a different color.
Yep.
Literally. So, anyway.
Back to this.
Yeah. So, I can be briefer because some fellow commissioners have covered what I, some of what I was going to say about the overlay district. I do like the new language that clarifies the procedure and the respective roles of the advisory, the design advisory board and the commission, planning commission. As Commissioner Smith said, legally speaking, this body retains all of its authority that it, it has always had in the area of site plan approval. I, I think, I don't think setting up this process can, can, can alter what this board's legal authority is. And I don't think there's an intent to do that. So, I think procedurally, it's much better language in here. I do wish for some greater specificity in some of the substantive language. I'm looking at, as Commissioner Kempner did, I don't have page and a, pagination here, but I think it's A, the language that's in red. And my, my, I'm referring to the paragraph that talks about recommendations, modifications, strip applications, et cetera, as part of the site plan review. There's a list in this paragraph of types of activities which can be modified. And, and I'm not 100% clear on whether that's, that, that list is, constitutes all of the matters that this, this commission can modify or just part of them that, that we can consider in a site plan review. So, I, I just like a little clarification of what is and what is not covered by this design review process there. I, I hope I'm making myself clear, I'm not sure I am. Then further on down, modifications can only be approved if they result in a higher quality development. I realize that the design guidelines, which are going to be a part of the ordinance, tell us, in effect, what the higher quality is. But I, I would dislike the language in here to refer to those guidelines. You know, I, just leaving the words higher quality dangling out there is kind of, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with it. I, I would like a reference in there to where it is that we will find what those higher quality standards are. And then, I'm also, I would urge that we, we define what a new construction project is and what a, a modification is. And I'm sure there's major modifications and there's minor modifications. And I couldn't sit here and say what's major and what's minor, but I think the ordinance should say that and it should clarify what kind of modification will have to undergo board review as opposed to administrative review. Up to two reviews. You know, I, I, I would think that you would have at least two reviews in most cases unless you had a, a real sharp developer who knew exactly what was wanted from the get-go and put a perfect plan down. I, I just, that hasn't been my experience up here, and I, I really don't think it would be the experience of the review board. So, I, I would kind of be inclined to leave the two reviews in there. And also on C six, the plan must address applicable elements as referenced in the downtown Berkeley design guidelines. That's a little vague. I, I would want language in there saying that the developer's submission must address the specific modifications that are requested for approval. This is sort of open-ended, must address. Does that mean address the entire guidelines from A to Z, all 114 pages? I, you know, I would, if I were a developer, I'd question, what is the scope of my presentation? So, I'd want to tighten that up a little bit, too. I, I guess those are all the comments I had for now. I, I was concerned when Commissioner Smith talked about an additional layer of bureaucracy. I, I, I'm hearing that this is not unusual, what we're doing. We have other communities with these boards. And so, I'm thinking that the real estate development community probably isn't going to be terribly surprised or dismayed by having to go through this process because they're already used to it. I mean, at least that's the impression that I'm drawing here. So, I'm, I'm not as concerned about it at this point. The, the, the process is a little more complicated, but I think sophisticated developers probably will find a way to make it work better than what we have now, as, and we've also discussed that, too. So, I think it'll be a help in the end, at least to the kind of developers that we, we hope to deal with here in Berkeley.
I'd like to say one thing, when you said, yes, it does occur in some communities. It's not by any means a majority, it's very few communities that this happens. But that, that doesn't mean it's a bad thing, that we want to address it. But she named a few, and there aren't many more that we've come across that have this, this step. But like I said, that being said, that's not a reason for us not to do it. But it's just not the majority of communities have something like this.
Is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on this item? Step forward.
Kurt Heit, resident Berkeley. Um, you know, as far as the area that's in red, when they talked about the modifications to the zoning ordinances and stuff like that, I, I understand now, it, it makes me feel a little bit better if they're, if they're referring to, as long as they're following the guide, the new guidelines. Because I actually, I'm a lot in that plan as far as, I referred to it many times when we were talking about the, the PUD that was before us for many months. And I actually like a lot of it. And, and so, that makes me feel better if they're, if they're following that and not trying to go outside of that. So, but is it possible that when they make their recommendation and it does come before the planning commission, it would save a lot of time if maybe it could be included with a deviations chart, if you will, to show how it's differing? You know, and whether it's not something that's binding or just something that would just, it, it'd be, help to be more informative to see that this is the modification that was required, you know, just so that people can see that is, maybe it's really not much change, it's just not something that's in our, our current ordinances. But the design guidelines themselves, I really like some of them. I mean, I, they're, they're really nice pictures and they, they're not intrusive into the neighborhoods for the most part on, on some of the application I saw. And I, and I think that a lot of people could, could see that and appreciate that. I just was concerned with the area in red and the wording, so you guys have all addressed that, but.
Anyone else?
I guess I'm having trouble understanding. It kind of goes to what Commissioner Kempner was saying. That first section in red, it says that the zoning codes for the overlay district, the regulations for the zoning district, other zoning codes and overlay districts shall apply. So, if this is adopted, does this override in any way zoning code? Maybe to make further clear, it says here that modification of the strict application of zoning district regulations may be granted by city council upon review and recommendation of the planning commission. I thought, it sounds like you would not be appearing before the ZBA in order to go outside of the zoning. Wouldn't that really just, wouldn't that require legally a variance? Zoning board is a quasi-judicial board with appeal options to circuit court. This is a whole different arena here, but wouldn't they, if you're going outside of zoning, don't they just flat out have to go to ZBA for a variance?
So, normally, we wouldn't do this back and forth, but I think I can clear, clear this question up for you.
Yeah, it's a question.
So, the design guidelines will be adopted by the city council and the design overlay district would then be put onto the zoning map and require rezoning and all of those sorts of things to approve it. So, when we adopt the design guidelines, they're essentially creating new zoning district standards, but they're guidelines in the sense that if someone is coming in and wants to construct a new building and we say it has to be all brick, that's what the guidelines say, a regular zoning ordinance does not have standards related to the facade. So, they could go to the design review board and the design review board could say we wouldn't recommend this because it's not all brick. And we, as the planning commission, could say, well, that's a recommendation, it still meets the standards of the zoning ordinance, we can approve that item. When you're getting into some of the modifications, height is one that comes to mind. I can't recall what the specific heights are for all of the different zoning districts we have in the downtown right now. But in some cases, the design guidelines may allow three stories, whereas the current zoning district that we have would only allow two. Now, since the design guidelines have been adopted and a new district has been put in place, a new overlay district has been put in place. That would allow us to say, even though this is currently zoned, what is one of our downtown zoning districts?
Twelve Mile District.
The Twelve Mile District, which allows two. The design guidelines allow three. So, we're modifying those Twelve Mile District standards to allow three, to be in conformance with the design guidelines.
So, we've adopted the DDA guidelines as ordinance for the overlay district?
We've adopted the design guidelines. They're guiding the development in the overlay district, but we're not saying, for example, that you could no longer construct something that's in conformance with the underlying district. I, I know it's a little bit muddy.
That's, it's the muddiness that concerns me. For example, you know, the way it stood before downtown district overlay guidelines, I, I guess it's the guidelines part that confuses me, because we have zoning, which is law. But then, this allows what they're calling modifications. And they're saying in this language, this speaks to what Ms. Kempner was saying, parking and other things that may or may not be. I mean, I'm real, that language is concerning to me. Let's take the ZBA hearing that went a couple of months ago for the beauty salon. They did not have enough parking, they were denied. Could the guidelines allow them to open up the salon they wanted?
So, the guidelines would only allow for those items that are addressed in the guidelines. The guidelines do not address the number of parking spaces.
Gotcha.
So, it's mainly site layout, building design, those sorts of things.
So, their aesthetics as opposed to.
It deals more with.
Neighborhood concerns that directly impact surrounding neighborhoods. I just don't, I'm confused by the way this is written. I practice reading zoning all the time, so if I'm confused, I would imagine most of the community is confused by this too, or would be. All right, I think you've addressed, though, what I was asking. Any, my second question, as long as you may entertain questions, does this allow for any administrative approvals for plans that, that, that would allow them to bypass planning commission? Are there administrative approvals in the, this particular adoption?
So, do you have any other questions besides this one? Why don't we list all the questions and maybe Mr. McLean can address them?
I have one more. All right, I think it, when you said common to change parking and all that, I'm taking from what you said, Ms. Chairperson, Chairwoman? I'm sorry. Common to change parking, et cetera, in other communities. I guess that kind of goes to my first question. Will this still go to the ZBA as variances? It may be, may or may not be common, but I think the way I'm hearing you and what I know about zoning, it would still be required to go to ZBA. You can't bypass that.
Is, is that everything? Are you upset with your comments?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, to address that one comment, I was just throwing that out there, as communities have parking modification standards. We don't necessarily have that here, but, and that's not what the design guidelines are talking about.
Gotcha.
If somebody wanted to come in and request fewer parking spaces than what's allowed by ordinance, then it would go to the ZBA or we have the shared parking provisions.
Okay.
Mr. McLean, do you want to address that one other question that Ms. Curtis had before that?
Yes, admin approvals. Right now, we're, we're very limited in terms of what we can do for, for administrative approvals. And I think one of the things we're going to have to work out in the language here that had been discussed, admin review for building additions. I, I think we need to specify a, a threshold for, for that.
A definition of what's an addition?
The answer to the question is no. I mean, it doesn't allow more administration approvals, it still has to go through us.
Right, the, the plans would still go through the regular process, whatever it happens to be per the current ordinance, site plan review or special land use or.
Right.
If it's administrative approval, then it's administrative.
There's nothing in this that affects our power.
And the ZBA.
Our current power.
ZBA, the, the.
Yeah.
The ordinances don't.
And to, to address another point, if I might.
Yes.
It is, it is legally possible for given property to be in two different zoning districts at the same time. So, that's what an overlay district is. So, in effect, property in this district, the downtown area, if you want to look at it this way, you can pick whether to make it conform to the guidelines or make it conform to the underlying district ordinance. You can choose. But the key to the understanding is both are law. I mean, the word guideline is a little fuzzy, but it, the, the design guidelines are part of the ordinance, they're legal standards, just like the other zoning ordinance standards. So, var, the variances and the ZBA does not come into play in this process. It only comes into play if you want something that doesn't conform with either the guidelines or the underlying ordinance requirements.
Maybe to clear up some of this confusion, there could be a little bit more in the introductory memo talking about overlays and how they work to, to allow, to make sure everyone understands where, where we're starting from.
And Madam Chair, just one last comment. I, I don't know if I was that clear earlier. I, in, in the paragraph that talks about what modifications can be made in the, through the design review. What I'm looking for is a delineation of, you know, this is a list of things that can be done, this is a list of things that are not part of this. In other words, more clarity as far as what you can modify under this and what we, is not affected by this. I'd be more comfortable with that.
I was just wondering if we could even do like a, like a flow chart for clarification, like where the builder enters the process to planning commission, city council approval, just to get an idea of how that process would look, if you could bring that.
Maybe add it to the flow charts and the public participation.
Vivian asked for that as part of the public participation process, she asked for a flow chart.
Just so we can see, and I think that will clear up some things, too.
Absolutely.
I did have one more question that I missed.
Oh, okay.
Just briefly. The board for the design review advisory board, all these appointees, will they have to be property owners in Berkeley if they're appointed by council?
So, I'm not sure that. So I'm not sure that, maybe Ms. Carmody could answer that.
Or a certain percentage of them, or, I mean, because we do have all those types of property owners within our city, so...
Right, so maybe we can get some clarification on that?
Thank you.
So the recommendation from other experts in the area is that you just try to find the best, most qualified professionals you can. You're not required that they all be Berkeley residents, because frequently, you might want somebody from outside of Berkeley to bring in an outside perspective. But that will be up to the council to determine, because they're the ones who will make those appointments.
Okay. So, Mr. McLean, I think that gives you a lot of direction.
Got all that.
Come watch him, he's taking good notes.
Okay.
Many topics.
So anyone for liaison reports? Anything to report from anyone? Yes, Mr. Richardson?
The environmental committee will be meeting this Thursday, day after tomorrow. I will not be chairing the meeting myself, but we're having C manager Baumgartner and DPW director Derek Schuler to the meeting, and we're going to be discussing energy efficiency opportunities, grant opportunities available to Berkeley, and also, I believe, the stormwater report, which we've been meaning to discuss for some time, and we've been able to finally get Mr. Schuler there, so it should be an interesting meeting, which I will not be at, but we're in capable hands. It's the Thursday at 6:30 in the Public Safety Building, second floor.
This Thursday?
Yes.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Murat?
Chamber. They're preparing for the state of the city. I think they're doing it as a breakfast this year, it used to be a luncheon. I think that is this week, Friday, yeah, it's Friday, so.
Great.
And just getting ready for, like, holiday selling season for the retail people, so.
Good. Anyone else?
Parks and Rec, nothing related to planning commission, though.
Okay.
They are doing a tail-on-the-trail on Halloween.
And BoFest.
And BoFest, sorry.
Okay, does anyone have else, anything they want to add for the good of the group before we adjourn? No? Motion to adjourn from anyone?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.